Hey, thank you.
Welcome.
How do you, how's everybody?
We're good.
Good. How about public comments? We got any of them?
No, we still have the winner.
When did we start having public comments?
That's why I told Mary.
Well, that's...
So what?
No, no one has signed up.
Okay, good, okay. Discussion regarding our water quality.
I would like to bring our water expert over, Woody.
Our water is water, he got it.
Every year, we are required to submit an annual water quality report, which is called the Consumer Confidence Report for the State of Oklahoma. And I wanted him to briefly discuss with us our water.
Well, excuse me, I'm a little hoarse, so bear with me. I don't know if you're familiar with it or not, or you've reviewed it, or anything else. It's basically, this is the water leaving the plant, going into the system. We've been doing this plant's, this, excuse me, we've been doing this report since 1998. And we've, there's only been, in all those years, there's only been one violation that it was minor. We've had none, absolutely none this year. And then we touch on everything, if you go back to the table. I can talk to you about what's in the rest of it if you'd like. But if you go back to the table, you can see we're well within all of our limitations. There's absolutely, we couldn't be more proud of our water.
Can I ask one quick question?
Sure.
Do you know when the TMDLs will be done on Cottonwood Creek? They're not currently available, do you know when they will be available?
They, at this point, they just did a Cimarron Basin, that's all there is right now. You look on the front, it says, "Water Source Assessment will be included in future..."
Yeah, I got the latest one that there was. But they said that they were still working on the TMDLs.
And they've been working on it since 1998.
Well, they're slower.
Yes, yes. I would, I would love to see it as well.
Yeah, there's a lot of that stuff I don't want in there.
I can tell you the little bit of testing that we did at Cottonwood in the very beginning. Cottonwood is actually plenty of little lakes.
Well, there's like 2.88 miles that's not impaired, the rest of it is.
Well, but you can do that for the State of Oklahoma.
Oh, sure, sure.
Cottonwood is actually plenty of little lakes.
But I sure would like to see that report, Ben.
Yeah. Wouldn't we all?
Mm-hmm, very important.
But is there any questions that I can answer? I mean, there's...
I might add that we don't do that report, the DQ.
No, that's DQ.
No, it's DQ.
That's, yeah. They've been working on the entire state.
People will, people will take that as, "We don't, we didn't do the report." I just want to clarify that we don't do the report.
No, we don't.
But it should be a level report.
Absolutely. We're required, we are not required to test the raw water. That's done by the state. They decide whether it's usable or not. Like I say, we included just about everything that we can. We're, we're below limitations on all, of our water. We couldn't be prouder. Can I answer the questions? Anything at all? We had a great supply of water, we're very fortunate. I'll just bring this up myself, we're very fortunate to have the Cottonwood, because everybody else in the state, their lakes are almost dry. If you've been to the lakes, Liberty Lake is full, Guthrie Lake is low. We pulled out of Guthrie Lake for half the year by itself. We started out at a lower level than we did on the Liberty Lake just lately. And we're only pulling a third as much from Liberty Lake as we were from Guthrie. So I'm very, very comfortable even without the rains we've just had.
I've got a question. What is the source of the Cottonwood?
It's my understanding, I've never traced it all the way down there. It's my understanding, it starts down by Penn Square Mall. And it's run off from the basin around it. I'd be curious to go see.
John, is the wastewater plants paid for this building off of the violations of up on the city?
Water treatment.
It's the water treatment, several years ago.
There's a lot of citizens in Guthrie that don't want to drink Cottonwood Creek water.
That's unfortunate.
And you can't really blame them in a way.
Well, but you've been drinking the Cottonwood Creek water.
No, I haven't, I have a well, thank you.
Guthrie has been drinking the Cottonwood Creek water since 1954. The first permit was issued to Guthrie in 1954. They were pumping into Guthrie Lake when it went dry. And then they put in the Cottonwood pump station. And the only thing I have on it is the easement, but it was first put in in 1970. And then we upgraded it. It was, all that was dilapidated and we upgraded it.
Correct me if I'm wrong, and it goes from Cottonwood Creek, we actually, it goes through the water plant. We process it, clean it, it's perfectly clean water.
Yes.
Go at your tab.
Yes.
So I think we should clarify that, it's, it's clean water.
Absolutely, and yes. I mean, that's, that's what this water comes from, right, the Cottonwood.
Well, seeing no further questions, I want to thank Woody for his continued intellect on water. Watching it on a daily basis, doing correct testing, not being in violation, and providing us, I think, the best water in the state.
Can I ask one more quick question? What about the wells that are drilled for our water?
That was before my time, they're still there.
I have a whole, I have a whole list of them, we're still using some of them.
No, we're not. We're still, they're still there, and we still have the water ride student.
Okay, that's good.
But we do maintain water ride students.
Yes. We have all the ride student stuff.
So you do think eventually you'll get that TML report on Cottonwood Creek, right? Some done, someday, before you're gone?
I would like to say yes, but I may be retired by the time they get it.
Okay, my other quick question to you, in your own estimation, considering we're in the worst drought we've had since 1950, do you, do you believe that the city council should be looking at other ways to have water in case it goes worse instead of better? In your estimation, you've been around a long time.
All right, well, my, my down and dirty answer to that would be, would be to, that we can get 4 million gallons a day out of the Cottonwood. We can pull 2 million gallons a day.
What I'm saying is, if Lake Guthrie went dry, what would your recommendations be?
Pull out the Cottonwood.
Okay, that's what I wanted to hear.
And how much water do we typically use a day?
Right now, a million gallons a day.
And we can pull out 4 million.
We can pull 4 million out of the Cottonwood over, right now, I think, it, the permit increases through time. So right now, I think we're at 2 million gallons a day we can take out of the Cottonwood. Plus, we can take a million gallons a day out of the lake.
So plenty of water.
Yeah, yeah, I have, I have no concern unless Cottonwood dries out.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Moving on to number two. You have in front of you, we just pulled a copy of the city charter to show that section 2-12 is to fill, how, the process by which we are to go by and filling vacancies in office. So this item is to discuss nominations and what process this council would like to take in an effort to fill a vacancy. By this document, it does state that the, that at least four members would have an affirmative vote. Is that right? I'm sorry. Yes, of at least four members, an eligible person to fill the vacancy at the next regular meeting of the city council following the creation of the vacancy, or as soon thereafter as is practical. So it would be a council majority vote.
Well, I mean, it's stating it says as practical, is it advantageous to wait until after the new council is seated and, I mean, just thought?
I think, Randall, if we were to interpret that charter, that section 2-12 is as practical, would you believe that waiting until after a council, new council is seated, would that be a practical?
Yeah, I mean, we're a month away, so I don't see that being an issue. And if you, I don't know what process you're going to use this time, but if you're going to take an application type process.
Yeah, I mean, I think...
It'll take everybody, right?
Yeah, so initiate the application process and then...
I would say initiate the application process, now ready for the next council.
It seemed the most logical. Which PR may be in, just like, right?
So, I mean, you say application process, can you advise me on, would you like the city staff to create application individuals that are interested and that are eligible for that, that ward?
Yeah, with that ward.
Okay, and then...
We have a... Do we not have one? We have a form.
You probably do.
Should it be a form of anybody's?
First-time caller, hometown listener, calling out one. And then, would you like to, in the next council meeting, or at a different time, interview them? Interview them before the May 7th or after?
I, I, you know, I think if you look at this, it's up to the council. So I think it'd be nice that we could all review, get maybe information, you know, applications from everyone, we can review it. And as a council, discuss it. I don't know if that's an executive session. Can we split, can we split the council in half, in two different rooms, and the council bounce applicant to one place to another? And then the council can reconvene, make a decision.
Did we do it wrong last time? There's no right one.
I think as long as there's a value.
Last time, they submitted three applications or four. And I looked at them, and that's when I brought that to the council. Council's got the right to vote to any decision that I make down. So we, I asked for sharing, and the council voted unanimously, let's leave it seated. So...
However you all want to do it.
I mean, there's different ways of doing it, but I wouldn't mind seeing, like, at the application process, just reviewing and be able to discuss the pros and cons of each. That, I, that's how I'd like to see it.
Could I email you all the applications and you review them prior to that, that meeting? Would you all be interested that on May 7th, the individual will be placed? Or after, whatever that next meeting is, May 15th, something?
Or maybe that night, we can vote on it, definitely.
If, if y'all are going to appoint them, you can do it on May 7th. If y'all are not going to appoint, the new council's coming on, they're not, you know, that's first thing, their first night there.
Yeah.
They probably need to be appointing a council person their first night on the...
We could go ahead and get it done now, then they could be sworn in on the 7th, with the rest of it.
If you're not going to have a meeting on the 16th, which is only...
Well, couldn't we have a meeting on the 17th? We still have a meeting that week.
Always hold a special meeting to do it, sure.
The purpose of not the 17th and 16th is because of...
Well, I know 89ers is 16th, but still, we could have a meeting that week, that's no big deal.
Or the week after, we could have a meeting maybe.
The 22nd, 23rd, there's the 23rd is a Tuesday. I don't see any other committee meetings or anything that evening, just a thought.
No.
If this council wanted to, to appoint prior to the seating of the new council, that's one option.
Well, let's get the applicant, see what, let's get them out and then see. This is a hot, seems to be a hotbed for political activity lately, so...
And then they could be sworn in on the 7th with the rest of it.
And it's worth three, you might only get one or two people anyway, so...
Sure.
We can see how the process goes.
How about this team, will put out the, the call for applicants? Do you want us to do that in the newspaper? Or just Facebook, social media? Y'all have word of the law ability?
Yeah, I think everybody knows, I think...
We could post it on the board down there and put it in the newspaper.
Okay, well, then we'll aggressively mark it without paying a fee.
What about the water bill, can we mention it in the water bill?
Too late, it went out.
Just put it on our website, I mean...
Sure, we can do that, okay. Call for applications, and as soon as we get, should we put a deadline of, I could deadline it for the 17th, April 17th? That'd give time to post and do a special meeting by the next week.
And send it to everybody so we have a few days to look at it.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
It'll work.
Deadline 17th. Sounds like good process. Next item was a presentation by the Norman Arts Council. Because we thought we were going to have a packed meeting, and they had requested more time than five minutes. And Mary didn't seem to have a, she was the one that asked at Norman, and I know Patty had asked that.
Well, I'm, I'm the one that came up with the idea and started it. And I talked to Mary, and I said, "Five minutes isn't going to work."
It's not good, right?
So they educated everybody here.
They'd be happy to come back at another time, and that can wait till May.
They agreed to May.
They agreed to May 7th, so they could do that. And we'll try not to book it so much. But, moving to number five, I have, I had not heard differently. We believe that the, the military was supposed to be here seeing, not the same people.
The 16th?
No, we told them that, no, we've made it very clear.
Tonight?
It's tonight.
Okay.
Because we told her the 16th was probably going to be canceled.
Oh, okay, well, let me, let me do this then, because I did touch base with Houston. And she wanted essentially the council to kind of formulate a list of questions that the council may have, direct questions. You want to funnel those to Serena, and let Serena move them over. Just generalized questions about the process, the project, if you have. If you don't know the project, it's the 80 acres. I'm pretty sure everybody on the council floor knows about it. But just to generate a list of questions. They're eager to hear from the council, some questions if they had any specifics that they can answer, and then maybe we can set up that time or reschedule that time.
Okay.
And me, and I'll, maybe I can touch base with her directly as well, if you don't mind.
Sure, sure, sure.
And we'll just, if you do have questions, if you, just send them to Serena.
And we gave them a list of about...
Yeah, and Serena's given them a list. I think they just wanted any, if the council had any specific questions that we needed to kind of preemptively help them, as they're crafting whatever language they want to talk to us about, so...
Number six, discussion regarding mending animal code, regarding the location of fowl and other small animals. If you turn your little page after the, the charter, you'll see ordinances. Renee unfortunately could not make it this evening. So I will attempt my best in talking about chickens, not giraffes. Not rhinoceros, we'll talk about chickens. The first part of the ordinance that is currently in effect talks about that you must provide shelter for, for animals. The next piece of the ordinance talks about every pen, enclosure, yard, or house where a dog, cat, or any animal is must be clean of waste, et cetera. And then if you skip down the last one, that no dog runs shall be maintained closer than 40 feet to an occupied structure other than the owner. Our suggestion, in an effort to, to discuss what was, what was said at the last workshop, was that no animal pen or enclosure shall be visible from the street. All enclosures shall be located in a backyard. No enclosure shall be located in a front or side yard. After discussing with code enforcement, one, one issue on this would be, this would have to be from now on. For example, it ties right into fencing, which is if you have a chain-linked fence, then you will be able to see from the street a pen in someone's backyard. So it makes it a little bit difficult to enforce that on its own unless you made then a fence ordinance that said you can have chain links. So on its surface right now, it's not the best ordinance by itself, because it would be very difficult to enforce if you could have a chain-linked fence, because then they would violate. If I put, you know, I buy a house in town, I go through the permit process, I put up a, a galvanized chain link, and then my spouse says, "Let's get Fido, a dog," and we put up a, a shelter in the back for Fido, you can still see it from the road.
Well, what if the road's running back of the property too? See, in a lot of those housing conditions, you're going to see it.
You're going to see it. So maybe the wording is more of that it's not, that it's not visible from the street, but that it must be located in a backyard. Maybe that would be more advantageous. It, it just would be so difficult to enforce saying that you can't see it from a road, a public road, which could mean an alley, which, which could be any public...
Well, everything on Lake Guthrie, it's got west, central, they all see each other's backyard.
Right.
And what do you do about side yards, is that considered the front yard? I mean, we had the problem with parking the grass, is that the front, or is this the front?
I think that council could decide that pens should only belong in a backyard. Sure, they could identify that.
Do we want to change the language, no animal pen or enclosure shall be visible from the street? Or just...
Shall be, I think I'd take out that sentence, although...
All enclosures shall be located in the backyard, no enclosure shall be located in the front or side yard.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, because you're going to be able to see them.
I don't know, the house is in Guthrie, you can see your acres, but...
Yeah, sure, yeah, there's no way.
If you drive, if you drive fast enough by my wood fence, you can see it.
I, I may have done that.
Do, if we, we take out that one sentence though, should we say all, instead, "All enclosure shall," because that's pretty encompassing, "All animal pen enclosures," closures? So add the animal pen and...
We will use the same language from above, let's say, "All pens or animal enclosures," something like that?
Yeah.
Okay. That also means that, you know, the doghouse can't go in the front yard. We understand that's not just chickens, it's any animal enclosure.
Well, most people's are all in the backyard.
Are we going to have a problem with that with dogs in the front yard? Of course, we're, this is grandfather, people are grandfathers, this is new.
You know, I've been talking to Suzie with the animal shelter, you know, we, we do have individuals that tether their, their animals on the front porch and in the front yard. So this ordinance wouldn't address it because it's, they're not enclosed. That's kind of a whole nother conversation about tethering animals.
Well, I do have a problem, just, just a thought. I know, I, I walk a lot, and that sometimes people tether their dog in the front. And the dog can get into the street, and you're walking, that dog can like bite you when you're walking in the street. Or even if you're in the right of way, if it's the right of way and there's no sidewalk, it seems like to me it's your right to walk on the edge of the grass.
I do believe that we have it where, that it should not, tethered animals should not be able to, to go in public right of way. And I don't know how that's worded exactly, but... Your children do not count as animal, fowl, rhinoceros, goats, giraffes.
Those are in your front yard, they gotta go.
Can you check on that?
It's, and I'm, I'm trying to think of where that is. I just talked to Suzie about that, I'm so sorry. But that would consider it almost like it's running at large, because it's on city, city property.
Because I've had that, I've got dogs chasing me in the right of way, so...
I will check on that. So they're tethered, was it distance by which they can roam?
Yeah.
So am I hearing a little bit that "All pens or animal enclosures shall be located in a backyard, no enclosure shall be located in a front or side yard"? Sounds like an amenable item to bring back to council at our next meeting, okay?
Well, if we got it like that, then that would automatically take out somebody tying a dog to the front porch. We wouldn't have to worry about that anymore, because according to that, it wouldn't be legal.
Well, no, because it just says "all enclosures," it's not an enclosure to tether an animal.
It's a completely different issue, tethering and an enclosure.
It's...
If you have a doghouse.
Well, I don't understand why people would want to tie them in their front yard anyway. I, if you're going to have an animal, surely you'd have a backyard for it.
Our animal control has reason to believe that they know why people do that. It's to stop people from...
Well, if you get bit, because they go into the door to read the door.
We do notify our residents that, you know, if, if you have an EMS call or if you have an issue, it makes it very hard to...
You gotta put the dog up, yeah.
It makes us hard to get to a front door if you have a, an animal tied to the front, front porch.
There'd be a lot of people bit like that too, that work in that service.
Sure. All right, seeing no other questions, I'll move to the next item, which...
That was easy.
That was easy. A discussion regarding residential fencing requirements, if you flip to your next page. We have some cities on here, Stillwater, Arcadia, Mustang, and Lawton. We were looking at, the request at our last meeting was to look at other cities and kind of how they, how they do things with fencing. I'll tell you, what we, we did find was that these cities do allow chain link. The city of Lawton said that they're in the process of modifying their ordinances, but that they, they do allow chain link fencing. But you can see it's kind of varying, like in some, in, in Stillwater residential districts, front fences are limited to so many inches, and there's setbacks. All of these though do require a fence permit. And mostly that is in the case of if you are changing the type of fence that you're going to use. So let's say you have a, a wooden fence, and it's dilapidated, and you want to tear that down and place a new cha, a chain link fence up, then that would go through a permit process and make sure that everything fits. So they, these all do permit their fences. Currently, the city of Guthrie does not permit fence replacement or new, on new construction. When I use the word "new construction," currently in our code, we use that when we're saying that they're building a new facility, a new home, a new house. So not to confuse it with the new construction of a fence. That would more than likely be the replacement of a fence, or a new fence being placed on a property that, that already exists. So to make this even more confusing, some of my questions then to you would be, do we want to allow, we currently allow chain link fence in residential areas if it's not a new construction of a property. I would say that, you know, they would be up to the council to decide if they wanted to permit fencing and how they want that process to go. It's very difficult to enforce items by which there's no permit process. We don't, contrary to popular belief, my code enforcement officer does not drive around every day attempting to find all infractions. We, we don't have that kind of time.
You're kidding?
No, I'm surprised. So we don't have that kind of staff or resources to do so at all. So we, that would make it very difficult.
Well, I, I think that the issue is we probably do need to start permitting it so we can actually get the control, so we can get what we want.
Your housing addition with Kevin would handle all your new stuff.
And those...
You could do it through the new process, if we could put that process in one for new housing. That's pretty easy.
Now, people that have chain link fence that want to repair it or replace it with new, can they still do that?
They currently can, under the current ordinance.
I agree with you, they have a need of a permit, absolutely.
The city could charge a nominal fee, just do the, the, what I've seen in most cities is like a $5. Because we're just making sure you're not, but if you don't want to do a fee, you can do a fee, you can not do a fee, it, it's up to, up to you all. We could pitch it to the finance committee when they discuss fees in, in May.
Come on, it's coming up.
We're just tagging everything with money here, money there, money here. When are we going to back off a little bit? I mean, $5, I wouldn't do it at all.
Then you don't have to. Part of fees is, is items that specifically are attached to individuals that are outside the normal scope of services. So in other words, then if I don't want to pay $5 for a new fence, then I don't get a new fence.
I just think we ought to give the people a break, I think.
Then they don't have to get a fence. That's what fees, that's what they're for. They don't have to, we don't make them.
We can move it to the finance committee, but I think, I think you have a consensus overall that we should move on with the...
At least a permit process, sure. I can get that done. Do we want to still allow, keep the ordinance as is as far as chain link fence? If it already exists, that it can be replaced as chain link fence?
Well, I think we should.
No, I think...
If it's existing.
You know, it makes no sense if, if two people live inside, on each side of a home. A young couple buys or start their home, they want to have a dog, it just seems like that happens. Their ability to be able to put a fence across the back and tie to those other people, it just makes all the sense in the world without having them do something, you know, build a...
Very costly.
Yeah, it'd make it cost prevent... I just...
Well, in new neighborhoods, you know, you're being a very valid point. New, new neighborhoods, if they develop up, are going to have their own covenants within the neighborhood as well, so...
Exactly, and I thought that's the reason we, we went through that.
Yeah, you've already got restrictions on them already.
To make that happen. Somebody buys 160 acres or 80, going to make a housing addition out of it, then we need to be uniformed, you can't have that right. But just...
I, I thought your question was chain link fence existing, if they want to replace it, can they replace it with a chain link fence?
Sure.
And I would say that if it's already there, and it's dilapidated, and they need to replace it, yeah. But I wouldn't say adding to it is...
Okay. So if it's not, okay, what I heard then was if it's, we're not replacing, let's say that I bought a property and I don't have any fencing, would I be allowed to put up chain link fence? I mean, I am now under the ordinance, I just want to make sure I'm not missing any points.
We didn't, well, I don't think we did that ordinance to mess with people that's in established deals. We did that for developers to make a piece of property that's, that we're going to, that appreciate.
Right, that's right.
That's where...
We've already addressed it, take care of it.
That's what I thought we did that for.
Okay, I'm saying that we, we want to look at a permit process?
I'm not even, I'm not really sure what we're, what we're talking about, but...
You may want to think about, have not a side plan. You may also think about putting on your permit that a fence, the city does not guarantee that the fence is properly located on the boundary. You're not involved in the land surveying, so you're not, you're not getting a domestic issue.
Good. Then I, I hear something about a permit process through fences, is that, okay, good, Jim? Next item, discussion regarding agenda items. There has been new, a, a new development on one of our items. I do have Curtis, some... Okay. Regarding total investments, we were notified by the Performance Bond Company that Total Investments has not paid their bond in the amount, their premium, an amount of $22,000 and some change. This was new since the last time that we met. Last time we met, council asked us to move forward to agree upon a schedule. Last time we met, council asked us to move forward to agree upon a schedule. We did receive a schedule that extended out a hundred and fifty-five days of the, the original contract date. Under our current contract date, a contract, liquidated damages are at a thousand dollars a day, so that would be a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars in liquidated damages. The real crux of the issue right now is that performance bond is more than likely not enforced, because the premium has not been paid. Staff does recommend at this time to withhold twenty-two thousand dollars from our payment that was to go out on Friday, so that we can pay the performance bond in the best way to protect the city. No matter whether or not this project for the airport goes into default or all that, we have, we, we have to finish this project. The best way that I can protect the city from, from that money is to, to hold back money, pay for the bond on their behalf, and be in, 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 in good with our contract. And then on top of that is to slowly not make payments, not all in one of that hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, but to withhold money in an effort to help them keep afloat, but also protect us of what, what could possibly happen. That money then would be, that hundred and fifty thousand, fifty-five thousand, of course, would not be liquidated damages if the contractor chooses to beat their schedule, which they have made comments that they could. At the end of the day, you don't wanna be holding the bag and trying to get money out of a contractor that has notified us that he is bankrupt. And so we, we are at a, a little bit of new information today. I, I believe today's staff is going to recommend that we accept their calendar. We, we, to be real honest, I believe staff is being extraordinarily giving and saying, add a hundred and fifty-five days to a two-hundred-and-twenty-day contract.
Is that calendar or work?
Work, I mean, it's calendar days, it's calendar days. That's not counting weather days, that's hundred and fifty-five, and we'll put those in there. So right at this time, we believe that we accept the, we accept the calendar, give them tho, those days to finish it. We recognize that that would cause liquidated damages as is now. The, the caveat accepting that, that, the stipulation of accepting that calendar is that, one, we withhold the twenty-two thousand and some change, and I'll share that in the council meeting, to pay the performance bond, to protect the city, and secondly, that we will.
That's all sixty-three, eight fifty-eight is liquidated damages?
Hold sixty-three thousand.
Out of this week's draw.
Which still allows them a, a somewhat of a payment?
That's a full.
No, that's a full hundred thousand. Okay. In other words, the contractor will be, we've gotta hold those liquidated damages in the beginning rather than in the end. If we have a contractor walk off the job, we're out the money and we won't be getting it back, in our opinion. So that's our, that's our latest. Next would be a, an item that you'll see on the, the agenda, if you have any questions about the triplex. There was a request to, for a triplex in a residential one area, planning did deny that request, just wanted to share that with you. Territorial squares, after meeting with, on that item, the territorial square dancers, after meeting with Andy, we did not come to an agreement of a, of a monthly payment. We came to an agreement that they keep up the building as of code, maintain it, et cetera, in lieu of payment unless council would like to entertain a, an idea of, of them paying a monthly, a monthly charge. But Andy and I did not come to that, that conclusion.
My thought is that since it is just one room, they don't have central heat and air, that let's just move the hundred and fifty from year to month with a kind of contract that they help keep up the place. And that way, I think that's a reasonable amount of money. I mean, it's, it's still inexpensive, but we're assuming they're gonna do some work around the place. You can't find a place for that cheap around the city. So I think it's fair, but we're gonna get more money back to the city, and we, I mean, we're, we, we have to tighten our belts around the city, and so for us to give away city assets for nothing is kind of silly, so. That's what I, what do you guys think about that? See?
No, I'm against it.
That's how I feel about it.
Is that only if it's got a resident?
Right.
That was my question, that was exactly what I wanted.
I would assume, yeah, with a resident.
Hundred and fifty a month if there's a resident.
They haven't sent it, they said that they want somebody in there, they want it to take care of the place, so.
But if they don't have a tenant, they don't owe that much.
We could put that in there.
Hundred and fifty dollars a year, a hundred and fifty dollars a month if there's a resident there.
Yeah.
Yeah, because you don't wanna break them up, I mean, they can have four hundred and fifty dollars a month if they don't have someone in there.
And my problem with the hundred and fifty a year, I mean, if our insurance is five hundred to seven hundred dollars a year, we're paying them to stay there. So that's a, that's a problem I have, that, you know, we, we shouldn't be paying folks to live in a place, you know. And I think still a hundred and fifty a month is an awesome deal for, for, for most anybody. And it is a small place though, small place, no central heat and air, it shouldn't be expensive, but to me, a hundred and fifty.
What was your conversation on that? They can't afford.
Yeah, that, that, you know, they went into that agreement not knowing this, so we'd be near to that tenant, which would probably be pretty disheartening for the tenant, sure, that they had a, a zero deal and now they're paying.
Yeah, we should honor it.
But why are we gonna, I mean, I'm not against anything, but why are we, why do we lease one thing out and then they cut another deal?
Yeah, that's the issue, is that they're not honoring the lease.
They were trying, they were trying to keep vandalism down.
Well, I understand that, but we don't arbitrarily just set, we have a contract, we don't arbitrarily rent it to somebody and let them make another contract.
No, we do not. That, that's in the contract and that's a part that they're violating.
It was broken, we're trying to renegotiate the contract.
Was John's perspective just to charge him a hundred and fifty bucks, or to charge him in services? 'Cause the last time we talked about, we talked about providing a hundred and fifty dollars a month in services, in lieu of.
In lieu of charging.
Right, where, you know, if I get my yard mowed, it costs me sixty bucks every time he mows my yard. I mean, if the guy's mowing and trimming the place.
That's what he's doing.
Then during, during the summer months, I promise you, he's, he's working a hundred and fifty dollars a month off. And that, and that's the question, is are we?
That's how I understood the majority of the council in the last meeting.
And you say he didn't, okay. The square dance club said they don't want any part of that.
No, they don't mind him keeping the place maintained, just not paying a, a monetary fee.
Well, and all I'm saying is if he's providing the services, he can provide us an invoice or copies of invoices, a recharge to take care of the place. If he buys gasoline to run a weed eater, I mean, up to a hundred and fifty dollars a month, I mean, is that?
I think that's fair.
Is that a fair?
I guess my problem was, we're still paying the insurance on the place, and, and I've talked to Serena about this extensively, because I'm a little concerned of, of us giving us, giving that much of a, you know, city asset away. You know, for one, I have to mow my place, you know, or, or I have to pay somebody, you know. Two, you know, Serena said really wouldn't cost much more for us to do it, we already do the park, it's not like, all we have to do is move, go on top of there real quick and, you know, twenty minutes later with a rider, you know, it's pretty much done. You know, we don't do the trimming as well as they could be, it could be done.
I'm just trying to find a happy medium.
Why don't you just sell the building, then we don't have to worry about it.
That's an idea.
That's an idea.
Sell the building, that's a, that's.
Well, I know an investor party that called me this afternoon that's interested in the property, so.
I'd rather sell it or, you know, not be paying insurance for, you know, a hundred and fifty or, or something.
As long as you own the building, you will pay that.
Well, you will, but you can always make some money off of that, at least pay, you know, make it even, I mean, we shouldn't be paying for assets like that.
So we're twenty-five thousand, you're gonna make your money off it.
Well, I'm gonna tell you something, I'm just looking across the table here at a lady that puts guys on the street when the grass can, starts to grow, and they are hooked up short to put them up there mowing that, if that's, if those people have been in charge of keeping maintenance.
Well, maybe it's on a hundred and fifty dollars, maybe it's two hundred dollars a month that they do in services. I mean, they're gonna hit that pretty darn easy.
How big, how big does he mow? Is he just mowing around the building, close?
Yeah, but if your place is a light switch, or, you know.
Sure. Half an acre.
I, I'm just trying to find a happy medium in between to say, okay, two hundred dollars a month in services, we're getting out of it and.
Well, or you can say two hundred dollars, and if you do up to two hundred dollars with the services, if you give us the receipts and show us how much time you've been mowing.
I'd be grateful that somebody would live in a hole like that.
Anyway, so I think, I think if you said a couple hundred dollars and say, if you get up, you know, 'cause if they only mow in a month, why are we gonna give them the full two hundred dollars? If they mow, we, we can give them a rate for that, and then if they change a lightbulb or, you know, do something that's actual maintenance, then they give us a receipt. It might be that it's only fifty bucks that month, but they did these repairs and whatnot, so.
Would you live in that place?
It helped pay for the insurance.
How hard is that for you to keep up with?
Yeah, that's, that's.
I think, I think a lot of people, a lot of people would, would, would live in a place a hundred and fifty a month if they had to take care of it, 'cause you know what? Even if you have to pay a hundred and, or a hundred and fifty a year, a hundred and fifty a month, you still gotta take care of the place. I mean, I mean, that responsibility is there in any way.
It's half the square dancers.
Yes, but they're not gonna.
And it's taking care of it, really, nobody's breaking into it, nobody's burning it down.
Nobody's, if they, you know, I talked to the guy, he said for a hundred and fifty a month, or whatever, they're still gonna have a resident in there, it's still, that's still a decent deal.
Yeah, be glad somebody's in it.
I don't think that's a bad deal.
You wouldn't live there.
They have incentive to have somebody live there, it's, find a place in Guthrie where it's that cheap. I, I challenge you, a hundred and fifty a month, anybody tell me a place they can rent for a hundred and fifty a month plus maintenance? Find one.
You wouldn't wanna live in that place for a hundred and fifty a month.
And because I think this meeting will be very exciting.
Can, can judge?
No, but I'm, you know, I'm on the park board, and also I'm with the Highland Park Neighborhood Association, and we do trash pickups in the park. And I will say that it has been aggravating to me in the past and to some other people in my neighborhood association, when you walk on the trail with the apartment that the people inhabit, and I don't know who it is, that the front porch will be all junked up, and that the driveway clear down to Pine Street is full of trash, and it seems like to me that the driveway, and I know that they talked about that the driveway needs